We are called to order, we do have the rule taken. We will have Mr. Kramer joining us shortly. With all that being said, I would call on Supervisor Phil Lightman to please come forward for the invocation. I would again ask everybody to right where the invocation member may stand and for the flag of allegiance.
Morning.
Morning.
If you will, please join with me in a word of prayer. Lord, we come to you today asking for the wisdom to make good decisions for those we serve. But more than that, we, your humble servants, come to ask that you watch over and guide all of those who serve and protect us all every day. A special prayer today in the aftermath of the hurricanes that have plagued our shores in recent weeks and more storms to come. To the people of the South, the Southeast and Caribbean, Lord, as they struggle to put their homes and lives back together, guide them, give them strength and patience, watch over them and keep them safe. This we pray in your name, amen.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning and welcome, everybody. First thing we need to dispense with is the minutes from the previous session, and I've entertained the motion to approve of, and I have motion for Supervisor Hamilton, and second vice supervisor Fire. Are there any discussion on those minutes? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And then pause, and that motion carries unanimously. Today, we have no excuses. We do have a number who will be here shortly, resignations, we have none. Under appointments, we have Jason Univerburg to the Wood County Representative on Central Housing Region, and Adam Dacklen as an alternate. There is no term limit, he serves indefinitely. Entertained motion is bad effect. By Angel Sacra, by Roser. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and again, that carries unanimously. Do we have any public comments this morning? Any public comments? How many of you have given? Any public comments? All right, then, we're gonna... I don't know if I'm gonna call this public comment or publish a special order of business that didn't make it onto the agenda, and that was our fault, but we do have... During the invocation this morning, you heard Supervisor Lightman refer to those who protect our country. We do have the Air National Guard here this morning, they planned to present last month, we had a mix-up in signals, and so we are gonna hear from them today. So whether we waive the rules, the three-minute rule under public comment, or include it as a special order of business, is there any problem from the United States Customs Supervisors or crew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They make a motion to waive the rules and give them as much time as they so might need, whatever they say.
Yeah, I'll second whatever he says.
All right, and a motion is everything, second by aye. It's in all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, and I will turn the floor over to Supervisor Wagner for the introduction. Thank you, thank you. We're very, very honored today to have with us Colonel David May and Chief Master Sergeant Patty Girls from Fort Field, representing the Combat Radiance Training Command, and they're gonna tell us why we're doing a lot of jet noise and why windows rattle for once in a while. Colonel May, before you, sir, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. The honor is all mine. I'll start by saying when people show up to Zineen's Lane on the base, you do make push-ups, so...
If it's raining, maybe I'm ready.
Speaking of services, I'd also like to mention, since I know we have a couple of Air Force veterans in the room, yesterday was the 70th birthday of the Air Force and the Air National Guard as well, so it's a big day, and we've been celebrating in a variety of ways this month, but it's a big year for us, and it's, I think, a critical dynamic point in the history of our nation, and I can tell you that Air National Guard across the country is engaged in a way that perhaps has never been in the past. So the hurricanes have been mentioned, the response down to Hurricane Harvey was immense. Reports of 20,000, approximately, National Guard members from around the country responded there, several thousand also to Irma, and just brought back several hundred from our own 32nd Brigade here in Wisconsin on Sunday night, went down there to assist. There are wildfires all over the West in our 1500 garden, around the nation, dealing with that as well. We have one airman from Fort Field who works with Chief Rose and I, who is an airfield manager, and he's in Port Rico right now, and will remain there, sheltering in place if Maria comes through and be on hand to assist with opening the airport, the weather conditions allow. So Air National Guard is hard at work for you in a variety of ways, not to mention the overseas commitment. The 115 fighter wing from Madison is currently in South Korea on a planned rotation, a regular rotation called a theater security package. So we're hard at work, as you should expect of us, but it's exciting and dynamic time. So as a commander of Fort Field, I think it's important that I reach out to the communities that we touch in one way or the other. We want to be good partners and good stewards with you in the community, and because we are the managers of the airspace above us, that the impact area across the state is pretty wide, and I talk about that a little bit today, but between Fort Field, the base, Fort Field, the airspace complex, and the hardwood range, we have a large presence here in Wisconsin, and I think it's important that everyone knows who we are, and you know how to reach out to us, and we have open lines of communication. So there's a few things I wanna share with you this morning, and I'd be glad to take questions, and I am running a timer, I will be respectful of your time, I know you have many other things to attend to today. So moving on, as I mentioned, the National Guard in general, we have a long, rich history dating back to 1636, and we're here as citizen soldiers and airmen to answer the call when needed and be that expandable force that meets the needs as they arise. Things really changed for the National Guard after 9/11. We became an operational force very much integrated with the active duty, and our operational tempo has never been higher, but our three main purposes are to help fight the nations of war overseas, to be the first military responder to the homeland, and develop and sustain partnerships around the globe. So it's a dynamic world that we live in, as I mentioned. If you turn on the news, you hear a variety of things going on, and these are the things that we're charged with preparing for, and that's where Fort Field comes in. We are a training base, we don't have any assigned Air National Guard or Air Force aircraft, we are a base that's set up to receive forces to come and train, to prepare for whatever might come next, and that's where that big question mark comes in, is it something specific? And in Europe, additional challenges with violent extremist organizations, whatever the case may be, we try to anticipate what that might be and train to it the best we can. Our near-peer potential adversaries are preparing.
Push-ups.
Who's gonna tell them bad news?
He's talking to the captain.
So they took it out on the special boat, and maybe you should do some push-ups.
He's talking a hundred, so I'm watching.
I'll ramp up a hundred if everybody else does two hundred.
Marine Corps push-ups.
You give us Navy, we start to... Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So near-peer potential adversaries. So technologically, China and Russia are trying to catch up to us, I'm gonna talk about some of the technology that we have currently, so they are trying to catch up to us in terms of airplanes. We have the F-22, we have the F-35, and they're trying to build things that compete with that. They're also trying to build surface-to-air missile technologies that can beat our best jets. So it's a time when the dominance gap that we've enjoyed for a long, long time is starting to shrink. It's been since April of 1953 that American ground troops has been killed by enemy air force, and we wanna keep that date the same, we don't want that ever happen again in history, and the Air Force takes the lead on that. So as I mentioned, we are a combat radius training center, there are four in the nation that belong to the Air National Guard, we are the biggest one, and in my humble opinion, we're the best one, but we are the biggest, closest in size is Alpena, and they focus on close air support mission. Gulfport focuses on battlefield airman type missions, and Stand Up, Georgia focuses on the air-to-air training mission. So at Fort Field, we focus on what we call the counterair mission, and we're perfectly set up for that, and I'll talk a little bit about why that is, and why that's so important right now. So if you've been to the base, and I assume at least some of you have been, we have a complete base that is military use only, which gives us a lot of flexibility for training. We have a nice level runway, we used to be at the Earth Site for the Space Shuttle, we can land anything there. We have 30,000 cubic miles of airspace, which we recently expanded. We worked on this for nine years with the FAA, and finally signed the agreement last November, 30% expansion on that airspace, and a new, much more modern agreement with the FAA in terms of our access to that airspace to train our air crews. And then we're, of course, very close to Madison, it's about a four-minute drive to the F-16 from Madison to Fort Field. It's about maybe 30 or 40 minutes to the tanker from Milwaukee, and Fort McCoy and Fort Field and hardwood are within the airspace, which is very important. A lot of places you have to take off and then commute to your range or your airspace to train and then go back. That takes time, that takes gas, that you could use doing training instead. And we are really on the cutting edge of being, certainly the Air National Guard's counterair training center, one of the premier, second to the Nellis Range Complex in terms of counterair training center, especially the surface-to-air. We have about 210 folks that work at the ATC, and we also have the Air Force Corps Squadron, which is almost a couple hundred people, and then we have a weather flight, maybe combat weather for the Army, and then we have almost 400 soldiers that work on base. Can't wait until Fort Field or Fort Oak here, as well as an adversity management training area there that the state has. So we've got a fairly big workforce, also a fairly big economic impact, over $50 million a year impact to the region. So this is our primary airspace where we train, and that box there is hardwood, and I wanted to play you this video. So this is the F-35, this is the Air Force's largest weapons system project ever, it's one of the largest defense acquisition projects in the history of our nation, and arguably, perhaps the most important. And the F-35 came to Fort Field last August, the first squadron-sized deployment ever, it came back again in May, no doubt it'll be back next year several times, but this clip I have for you is the F-35, about $100, $180 billion aircraft dropping a couple laser-guided precision bombs on hardwood range, which I think is pretty awesome, all in itself, it's even more awesome that it's happening here in Wisconsin with the great capabilities that we have. And yes, they did hit their target, but that's pretty awesome. That is the newest cutting-edge, bitch-tough technology in the world. On the ground, around the same period of time that that was taken, we had members from a couple SEAL teams on the ground doing what's called the JTAG mission, Joint Terminal Attack Support Mission, the guys that call them the bombs from the ground. So you may not know, but we have SEAL teams and other special tactics personnel that love to come and train here because of what we have here. I think that's pretty awesome. This picture here is, this is the Nellis Range Complex out in Nevada, it's one of the largest ranges that our nation owns, and I just bring this up for comparison, so they hold an exercise out there called the Red Flag, and it's basically, it's kinda like the Super Bowl for fighter pilots and for air power. It's big, it's costly, and it's very intense training, goes on for about three weeks, they have access to national-level assets like satellites and other things that we don't, but in terms of airspace and ranges, we're actually fairly close. That blue line right there, that's our airspace base. The difference is, we do an exercise that's about half the size in terms of aircraft, and we're much more flexible. We focus on tactical training, we focus on customizing everything we do for our air crew in a way that really can't do anywhere else in the country. And that's why we're special, and that's why we're extremely relevant right now. So there's us, and there is a depiction of our airspace lane, as we call it. And what's significant about that is the F-35 and the F-22 require more airspace than previous airframes. They fly higher, they have standoff technology that allows them to do things from miles and miles away in ways that we've never seen before. So about 200 miles long by about 55 miles wide is the minimum length that a F-35 needs to train. That happens to be exactly what we have, and that is awesome. It's also awesome that within that, you have Fort Field, you have hardwood, you have Fort McCoy, fighter wing nearby, and the air refueling wing. It makes this really the premier place to train the way we need to train right now, the surface-to-air. There's nowhere else like this. So why is that important? What's the big deal about that? So since, really since the first Gulf War, our Air Force has been primarily flying in combat missions where they didn't have an air-to-air adversary, they fly in what we call a permissive environment. Their primary concern was providing close air support. So guess what we're really good at doing right now? Close air support in a permissive environment. What we haven't had time or energy to do is to train for the full spectrum of missions, including flying against an air-to-air adversary and as well as electronic warfare and surface-to-air missile threats. That's what we do at Fort Field, and that's exactly what not only the Air Force needs from us, but the other services that have fighter jets as well. So the Navy and the Marine Corps are very interested in using our capabilities. So that's, I think that's awesome. We are the right training center, provided the right environment, the right capabilities, the exact time that our nation needs from us. We are being looked at to fit into a wider regional base construct where we take on additional operational control responsibilities and airspace and threat emitters in other parts of what they call Region Eight. Region Eight is basically the Midwest down to southern Indiana, Indiana, and then over west to Colorado, and that would be an awesome additional mission for us that could take place. As some of you may know, Madison, the fighter wing in Madison, the 115, is in the final five in contention for possibly getting the F-35. We'd like to hear about that this fall.
It is!
If that were to come to pass, and we hope that it does, that would additionally fit into our future, our very exciting future in terms of what we can do in terms of training for our military. So looking forward, we, as I've tried to describe it for you succinctly, we provide a very dynamic training environment that's contested, it's degraded, operationally limited, just like we think we would see overseas in different combat theaters. We host an exercise called Northern Lightning, which is sort of what I described earlier, and we're gonna do that twice next year. So you may recall, we held that in May this year, and you may or may not have heard of that F-22 or an F-35 flying around in your neighborhood, that's what was going on. The Live Mission Operations Center is the additional responsibility that I just described it with, essentially, Fort Field as the center of managing the operational training activities, which are multi-state area. With all that, we're hoping to get some more staff, of course, everybody is right, everybody would like to have more manpower. We would too, but if we're gonna do all this, we're really gonna need... We are also in the process of standing up a community council. So the fighter wing has a community council, the air refueling wing in Milwaukee has one. I thought it was about time that we had one, and we're just in the beginning to do that. But that is a community council that individuals can join, organizations can join, and that's a way to help support us, so there's my timer, help support us and get involved with what's going on in the base, help advocate for us, become aware of what our initiatives are. But again, my primary purpose in coming here today is to open up the lines of communication, make sure you know who I am, make sure that you've heard something about Fort Field and hardwood range recently, and know that we want to be partners with you, we want to be good partners, but also that there are some exciting things going on in the base that have not been going on for a number of years. I think we're on a very pivotal developmental time for the base in a good way. Future's bright, there's a lot of challenges, and our nation needs us to be available to provide training for our combat air. So with that, I'll pause and see if there are any questions or comments.
You have any questions for Colonel May? Any questions? While you're not asking any questions, I'll add that you've been an extremely valuable partner of ours over time, and we have, for some of you who've been on the board for a while, we actually, or they have utilized parts of our county for us, were hidden targets at different times when they're running operations. I can tell you, I've had the opportunity to be up there a few times, I've been up in refueling aircraft, transport, a helicopter during different operations, and it is incredible what they do. So if you ever offered that opportunity, I would say take it and get it. And one of my favorite ones was, I was out there one time with a number of people, and they were flying some simulated combat missions, and I was watching the screen, and I'm watching little bats going, and all of a sudden one just, basically just took off, and I said, "What's going on?" And he said, "Well, they go supersonic over the legs," you know, once they get out over the Great Lakes. I said, "That's interesting." They do all their dogfights, or simulated warfare, they came back in, they had a question and answer session with board members like you sitting here, and I remember I asked, it was our Air National Guard wing out of Madison, head direct, he goes in F-16 squadron out there, and I think the other one might be behind me, DC, Indiana, but I remember I asked a question, I said, "You just got back," I believe they said Iraq, and I said, "What were you doing?" And he said, "Patrolling the no-fly zone." And I said, my question was, "What happens if you, as an American pilot, flies into the restricted airspace, or they're part of the no-fly zone?" And I loved the answer, he said, "Sir, we are the United States Air Force, we fly wherever we feel in the land, please." Again, you got the biggest round of applause I've ever heard from the audience. I want to thank you for coming today, Colonel May, because you and the people that you serve with are helping this nation safe and great. So... The other thing I want to mention too is those people who serve come from all walks of life. As I was introduced to those people in that squadron out of Madison, there was a farmer, an insurance agent, you know, people that you see on the street probably don't picture them up in an F-16, but obviously, a lot of training, a lot of time goes into that. Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I'd just like to add my thanks to Chief Rose, also for coming. I am one of those Air Force veterans, I'm sitting in the front row there. I have to admire the skill and the expertise of the people that are under your family, they do an excellent job, and we're glad to have you guys as neighbors. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more special order of business this morning that we give another important part of our community, not only in our community, but making it a better place, and we have a United Way presentation show this morning from Terry Yanis, who is the CEO of our local network. So Terry, if you'd like to come forward and introduce... You may want to be reporting as yours.
I'm Jason Weaver, a veteran of the campaign, so I'm the director for the county, and also involved with the United Way campaign after 2017. The campaign begins September 12th, there's a lot of exciting ways that Supervisors and staff need to follow this year. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce Terry Yanis, the CEO of United Way for Wisconsin, K.D. Peters' campaign chair for 2017. We're gonna share a little bit about the campaign this year, to talk about the great ways United Way impacts our friends, neighbors, and the community in all states. At this point, I'll turn it over to Terry.
Good morning, everyone. We just want to take a few minutes to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. Our United Way here in Wisconsin Rapids serves Southwood County and Adams County, and there's another United Way, Marshfield United Way, that serves the north end of the county, so I mean, probably many of you are familiar with one or both of the organizations. I did give you each a handout, which is our campaign flyer, and some information that you can take a look at, but each year, most United Ways, including ours at Marshfield, asks for someone from the community to volunteer their time to go with us to different workplaces and talk about why the campaign is important to them, why they're involved. So for our United Way this year, that's Katie Peters. Katie is the school partnership coordinator for a number of schools, so she's just gonna speak to you briefly about why she's involved, and then I'll tell you a little bit about the programs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here today. What a great group to share information about our campaign with. I'm honored to be the United Way Chair, first time for the 2017 campaign. I am honored, I would first like to express my appreciation to my family and friends who have been supporting me on this journey to make our community a better place. One of my passions at home, work, and in the community is helping others. I can share that I benefited from the United Way programs as a kid. My own parents struggled, they certainly did the best they could, but sometimes that's not enough. Families in our community face this every day, whether we like to acknowledge it or not. My background is in education and family community outreach, as Terry mentioned, for over the past 15 years. This has enabled me to personally see what many of the toughest needs in our community are, they have been and become and continue to be. I assume everyone in this room has been connected with someone that has been struggling in some way or another, maybe a hardship like housing, paying utilities, or maybe not even having food to eat. Did you help that person? Were you unsure what to do? Giving to the United Way covers many of the resources struggling families need to make ends of meat, week to week, or even day to day. Let's come together as a strong community by opening our hearts and wallets to help people move from challenges to successes towards building a stable life. No matter how much you give, all of your donations get pooled together to help all of these programs and members of our own community. That's the great thing about the United Way. No matter the size of the gift, the impact is great. The key is to give. Last year, United Way continued its work on the Agenda for Change. Collectively, our programs, coalitions, and initiatives impacted over 25,000 lives in 2016. We are expecting the same level of service in this upcoming year. What is your hope for our community? We have a campaign video that we're not gonna show today, but you can find it on our website. There's also a video for the Marshfield area. As you watch the video, I ask you to reflect on your impact in our community and take a minute to see how you can shape and unify giving into your life every day. This is tough work, it's critical work, but it's totally doable work. Give today. Thanks for your time, and thanks for changing lives. Thanks for your donations.
So our United Way here in Southwood County serves, helps to fund 31 different programs in the areas of education, income, health, and safety net service. We also have six community coalitions that have come together to address a certain topic area of the community. Actually, Amy Newberwick and I were having a discussion before the meeting started about how the Hunger Coalition has made a great impact here in Southwood County, and just an example of that would be, our local food pantry used to be an emergency-only pantry, so you could visit six times per year when you had an emergency, but you had to go to community action to get screened, and then you had to go across town to the church to pick up your food, and you had to go to another location if you were getting cold or frozen food. And this is tough for families that already have a transportation barrier. So through the work of the Hunger Coalition, we were able to get that all in one spot, and now our food pantry, Swebs, is located over on 12th Avenue in the old Reynolds Hardware Building. They are a supplemental pantry, which means people can visit monthly, and so we're collectively, by working together, meeting the needs better of the community and also reducing complication. And so what are we asking of you today? Really, what our thought is in being here today is that we would ask you to endorse the United Way and the campaign with the county employees and encourage them to give and get involved in whatever way is meaningful for them. Jason does a great job of organizing things, the Health Department has had a really strong campaign, and others throughout, but we would really like to see more participation from the county employees to help us do this work. One other thing I wanted to just call out is you did receive a little fact card that looks like this, is the 211 program. If you're not already familiar with 211, 211 is a statewide 24-hour resource and referral line that members of our community can call when they have a need. The little icons on the front of the phone show the things that we get the calls for most often, but we do house a call center here in Wisconsin Rapids, we answer calls Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and then we have after-hours coverage at another location. But this is a really important service. The tornadoes that recently went through Chittack in Bering County, that's one of our counties that we cover, and we actually handle all of the damage claims. So all of those individuals were directed to call 211, they had an interactive database set up, so we could enter those, and then emergency management could cross-reference it on their side, but they didn't have to use their manpower to answer the calls when we already had someone doing that. manpower to answer the calls when we already had someone doing that. So we definitely have the ability to meet those needs, and then we also, through our volunteer center, have a disaster volunteer reception center program, which works with Steve's group on if there is some sort of disaster in Wood County, what do we do with the spontaneous volunteers that present and want to help? And so again, then Emergency Management can do what they really need to do and are trained to do, and we have two core teams that are trained to handle any spontaneous volunteers that present in the event that there would be some sort of disaster. So any questions that you might have some?
Questions for Terry? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And once again, you know, the generosity of people in this country are what make these programs possible. There's no way the world government could handle the impacts of some of the natural disasters we've seen and some of the unfortunate circumstances that are throughout the country. Those are only handled through organizations like United Way, so we can't measure support. I think at this time, we can get into the package.
Yay!
Page six, the first thing to pack it, there's four referrals there, lots of publicity, judicial legislation, the Hur Committee, to all the appropriate chairs there that's already informed. Page seven in your packet is the Executive Committee meeting minutes on Wednesday, August 3rd. There are minutes from Monday, August 28th on 8. Minutes from Wednesday, August 30th on 9 and 10. Minutes from Tuesday, September 5th, beginning on page 11 and running through page 16, 11 through 16. The Wood County Employee Wellness Board meeting minutes on Tuesday, August 7th on 17, 18, and 19. Comments from the county clerk for September on 20. Monthly letter of comments from maintenance on 21. From safety and nurse management on 22. IT's update begins on 23, and runs 23, 24, 25. There's an update from the treasurer's office on page 26. Pages 27 through 33 is the monthly letter of comments from the Human Resources Department, 27 through 33. Now we start to get into the meat of this. Page 34 through 52 is the CIP update. All the facts and figures on there, and there's going to be obviously some resolutions to deal with and some things to follow. Beginning on page 34 and running through page 52, it's a breakdown and an update. You got a chance to take a look at those. And then that brings me to page 53 in your packet, which is a resolution brought forth by the Executive Committee. I want to say also that we have Mike Martin and Marla here prepared to do a PowerPoint presentation, if there's any of this that you want to see as it rolls out, and how it affects budgets and overall spending.
This will be Resolution 17-9-1. Initial resolution, authorizing issuance of general obligation notes to fund capital items requested in the 2018 budget of dispatch, emergency management, Edgewater Haven Nursing Home, Norwood Health Center, Parks and Forestry, Information Technology, and UW Wood County Marshfield. Fiscal note, proceeds from general obligation borrowing not to exceed 1.2 million.
Heard the reading of the resolution, but have an option to approve by Wagner, second by Supervisor Henkel. Discussion on the resolution. Discussion on the resolution. We've all had it explained, I think, probably thoroughly several times in different committee meetings. I'll ask one more time, any discussion on the resolution? I guess seeing none, you're ready to vote? I would ask you two, please vote. That resolution passed 16-3. That brings me to two more resolutions from the Executive Committee in the packet. Pages 54 and 55, those are both amendments and budgets. Does anybody have any objection to me taking those two together? Any objection? These are in and out of resolutions. If there's objections, any will take these together.
This will be Resolution 17-9-2. To amend the 2017 budget of a department with employees that qualified for a merit pay bonus in 2016. The funds were originally appropriated in the Human Resources Department. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The appropriation to be transferred was appropriated in Human Resources programs and was anticipated to be transferred to the department approved for merit pay bonus. The adjustment totals $1,548. The next resolution on your page 55 will be 17-9-3. To amend the 2017 budget for Norwood Dietary Function for the purpose of funding the capital purchase necessary to replace the current dish machine with a new dish machine. Fiscal note, to transfer $18,279 from available balance and contingency to the Norwood Dietary Function. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $419,870. The adjustment to the budget totals $18,279.
Given a motion to approve, I have a motion by Fire, second by Hamilton. Any discussion on either of these? Any discussion? Please vote. That resolution passed 18-1. 18-1. We have additional resolution on page, we have several of them, but on page 56 in regard to sale of tax-dedied property.
This will be Resolution 17-9-4. To accept offer of sale of tax-dedied property. Fiscal note, offer amount of $12,000. After real estate taxes, publication fees, abstracting fees, maintenance fees, we show a loss of $40,296.61.
Motion by Clendetti. Second by Bright. Discussion on the resolution. Any discussion on the resolution? Let's go to the board and vote. Resolution passed 19-0. I also want to commend our trade for going out and taking care of some of these who've been sat there for year after year after year, and we've been, I don't want to say aggressive, but at least we've been working on these in a methodical way, getting these off of the books, and getting it back in the tackle, so it's great, we appreciate it. Page 57.
This will be Resolution 17-9-5. To update resolution designated public depositors and authorizing withdrawal of county monies to include number of signatures and titles of authorized persons.
Motion by Hamilton. Second by Clendetti. Any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Then please vote. That resolution passed 19-0. The last resolution coming out of the Executive Committee today, page 58 and 59, with some background information on 16 and 61, and I'd ask the board to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 17-9-6. To authorize entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement relating to the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative and authorizing participation in the investment programs of the fund.
Again, motion by Fire, second by Roser. Any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Please vote. That resolution again, passed 19-0. Page 62 in your packet is the beginning of the Health and Human Services Committee report from August 23rd. That's on 62. Page 63 from August 24th, as well as 64. Any questions on those? The Health Department's monthly report on 65, 66, and 67. 65, 6, and 7. The Human Services Department report, beginning with Director Ruins, beginning at 68 and running through page 73. 68 through 73. Our veteran service officers report, 74 and 75. And that brings us to the first resolution in our packet from Health and Human Services, page 76.
This will be Resolution 17-9-7. To create two 1.94 FTE upset case manager positions. Fiscal note, anticipated wages and benefits based upon step one, pay rate seven for each position. Our wages and fringes totaling $63,567.53.
Again, you put the three resolutions, the motion to approve by Fisher, second by Bright. Discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Please vote. Thank you, that resolution passed 18-1.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Roser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we leave the Health and Human Services, I'll get a reading over this. I think most of you know that by state statute, we're required to have a physician on our Health and Human Services Committee. And recently, the physician representative that we've had passed away, and I would like to publicly thank him for his service, and just to say that it's such an honor to have these people on our committee. Dr. Kay was very, very engaged in our committee. He contributed immensely over the years that he was on our committee, and we were all very sad when he was diagnosed with cancer and then ultimately passed away. So I just wanted to publicly say how much we appreciated him on our committee, and we will miss him greatly.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that, Supervisor Clendetti. And I would like to pray, Supervisor Roser.
I just think we should have a moment of silence, standing, moment of silent prayer.
I think that's appropriate. I'd ask the board, please, Bright. Respect the class of today for one minute. And thank you very much. And Dr. Kay was a respected physician, a community and serving asset to the Human Services Department and the whole community. It is sad, recently, he passed away at an extremely young age, because there were a lot of great things ahead of him at this time. Thank you for the suggestion. Supervisor Roser.
It was just to make the same motion that Supervisor Clendetti.
Thank you very much. Page 77 in your packet, this is the Wood County Public Safety Committee from August 14th. Those that run 77 through 81, you can actually look at those, 77 through 81. The Wood County Traffic Safety Commission meeting on May 24th on 82, 83. The main officers report on 84. The foremen's report, 85. Report from crime stoppers, 86. Some meeting of the Crime Stoppers Board of Directors at the Fitzgerald Fire Department tonight at 6 o'clock, if anybody's interested in just attending to see what they do. Monthly jail population figures, 87 through 92. Pages 87 through 92. And then that brings us to a resolution from Public Safety on page 93.
This will be Resolution 17-9-8. To authorize Wood County to enter into an agreement with super funding under Section 165.90 for law enforcement services on restricted tribal lands. Fiscal note, $33,933.
And then a motion from Clendetti, and a second by Roser. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Please vote. And we passed 19-0. Thank you. We'll begin the minutes of the Seat Committee here on page 94, and I believe Supervisor Henkel has an introduction to me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have all heard over the years that we are having some changes in the extension of services and organization, but mostly in the organization. And today, I'd like the new area director for extension to come up and introduce himself. This is Jason Howser. Probably in the front there.
Welcome to Wood County, Jason.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you Supervisor Henkel for your intervention. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm happy to be here. My name is Jason Howser. I'm the new area extension director for Wood County, also serving Marathon, Clark, and Portage. So I've been on the job for about two months, started July 1, through part of the next-gen reorganization process, and so I'll be assuming some of the department responsibilities currently occupied by Peter Manley. He'll still assume that role through the end of this year, and then we will transition some of those over. So I'm currently working with the Seat Committee to make sure that this transition goes smoothly, and I do appreciate your time and consideration as we kind of move things forward. And again, thank you Supervisor Henkel for the time this morning. I'm no stranger, I emerged from central Wisconsin, so I grew up in Wasas, so it's nice to come home and serve in the area close to my roots. I currently reside in Menominee, Wisconsin, where UW South is, so I do commute to all four counties, and my office is based out of the old current, so. Yeah, so thank you. I do not have cards yet, so I just have my office location solidified last week, and so once I have those available, I will make sure that everybody from the county board gets a copy of that, so thank you very much.
I really appreciate it. There's a thousand cards, and there are sitting on my desk, too. All right, Seat Minutes, beginning on page 94, and these are from Wednesday, September 6th, and running through page 97, page 94 through 97. Various minutes from committees of the Golden Sands Resource Conservation Development Council, beginning on page 98, and running through page 107, 98 through 107. The monthly activity report from Land and Border Conservation, beginning on page 108, running through page 112. Supervisor Clendetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got to say one thing, I attended that August meeting, and I thought it was rather disastrous, how the committee itself hanged up on one of the supervisors, had all kinds of people there. He had something on the agenda for a nine-point plan, and I think it was very disrespectful how that meeting was held. Thank you.
Just a quick question in regards to that comment, generally speaking, because it kind of falls under this. Do you want Supervisor Clendetti to touch base on your choose-to-reuse program? Which is over, but I think was a success.
Yeah. It was very much a success. We had 10,160 pounds of different irons. Most of the things are the dehumidifier, which would cost you at least $35 to get rid at some recycling place. We take them free. We got in many air conditioners, and we took in also $224 worth of tires and $214 worth of junk that we charge people to put in the dumpster and not take home. We paid for the dumpster. I just started to report this. The fact is that you probably all saw it in the paper, in the police reports. And it's almost embarrassing to tell you about this, but a Grand Rapids employee called the police that two bottles of toilet bowl cleaner were stolen out of the bathroom. And also, the employee also reported to the police that apparently his gloves were also stolen at previous choose-to-reuse. I have no proof that that happened, but it's just road bumps we had. It was a very successful one. We get people from all over the state come to that. They drop off things and pick up things. We had very little to give them. Very successful. And hopefully, we'll have one in May of two thousand and eighteen.
I wanted to touch on that, and I appreciate the update, because not only is it a good way to get rid of stuff, but it greatly impacts our county park and forestry lands, where a lot of that stuff ends up if it doesn't go to the choose-to-reuse or one of the other recycling events. So I want to thank those involved who ran that program and those who funded it. All right, back to land and water conservation, one-oh-eight to one-twelve, nothing there. From planning and zoning, their monthly reports, pages one-thirteen through one-seventeen, one-thirteen through one-seventeen, any questions there? The C-Wed Board of Directors meeting, July nineteenth, page one-eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Any questions? Some facts and figures from the Community Development Block Grant, one-twenty-one, two, three, and four. Any questions there, Supervisor Hankel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the brochure that is included on one-twenty-three and one-twenty-four. This housing program does have funds available to help lower-income people fix up housing stock. And it is a very good program that has benefited several places in this area and the general community. And if you know of anyone who would be interested in that kind of a program, contact Jason. Jason Gruber.
Now, we've got to be careful.
I would also like to make sure that everyone notices the folder on their desk for the seat tour. The seat tour will begin October on the sixth. It is open to the public. If you want to bring your spouse, that's fine, too, or a friend, just let them know. You have to reserve, and you have to wear closed-toe shoes. Thank you.
Thank you. Pages one-twenty-five and one-twenty-six, again, out of our planning and zoning office, it's the two thousand and eighteen Wood County Economic Development and Funding Request forms. So if they have any questions there, again, Jason, do yours, you got it. The monthly update from UW Extension, beginning on page one-twenty-seven, with Peter Manley's report, and running through page one-thirty-one, one-twenty-seven through one-thirty-one. And then that brings us to page one-thirty-two in the packet, and a resolution from C and all of the seats up.
This will be Resolution seventeen-nine-nine, to seek county board approval to amend the two thousand and seventeen Wood County Wildlife Damage of Aid and Claims Program budget for unanticipated state aid monies and to appropriate those monies to wildlife damage expenditures. Fiscal note: no cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to be received in two thousand and eighteen. For two thousand and seventeen, the funding will be from contingency and recouped in two thousand and eighteen. The adjustment to the budget totals $25,143.75.
Okay, I have a motion, I'd like to Supervisor Curry there first, and then, sorry, I have a second, give me a second. Supervisor Kramer. All right, Curry and Kramer are now. Any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Hankel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have to clarify, we did not manage to get it to the executive committee because the money came in at the last minute, and as, just as a matter of fact, it is not co-sponsored by the executive committee. And in fact, during the meeting, they had to run out and fill the numbers and then write it back to us for signature. So it was very last minute because of the weird way things were mistaken.
Any other questions regarding the resolution? Any questions? Okay, please vote. Resolution passed nineteen-zero. Supervisor Ashburn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess we haven't mentioned that the Queens League will be in town, it's over September thirtieth, from April one, so if anybody has anything to be on, they're all welcome to come all the way.
I heard September thirtieth, I didn't catch the time.
From April one, that's accurate.
All right, thank you. Minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee, beginning on one-thirty-three, one-thirty-four, signing sheet on one-thirty-five, any questions there? Their meeting from September first on one-thirty-six, seven, and eight. Pages one-thirty-nine through one-forty-four, the J-N-A-L committee ran session the other day, ran a meeting when they brought in Serdi Kassar from the WCA to run through the resolutions that will be presented at the WCA conference, which some of you are attending this coming end of this week and Sunday. Those are on one-thirty-nine through one-forty-four. We reviewed all of those. Then we have the report from the Child Support Agency on one-forty-five. Court of Counsel Castiglal's update on one-forty-six. Notice of injury and claims, beginning on one-forty-seven and running through one-fifty. And then that brings us to a resolution on page one-fifty-one.
This will be Resolution seventeen-nine-ten, to encourage the Wisconsin Legislature to advocate the soon-to-be-ended two-cent-per-gallon petroleum tax for PECFA, petroleum inspection fee funding, to general transportation aids to counties. Fiscal note: if this resolution were to be enacted, it would have the potential to provide substantial revenue to all counties in the form of general transportation aids without raising taxes.
I assume Supervisor Wench would like to make this motion. I have a motion by Supervisor Wench, and a second by Supervisor Zerfloo. Discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? I cannot believe, after all we're doing, I have all the time. Do you want to say anything on this one?
Thank you. Thank you. This worked. All right. Anyway, but this almost is, and I found out after I talked to several different Assembly of the Senate senators about the PECFA fund, found out that it's ending as far as payments. The point is that they, I suspect, they're going to continue to collect the two cents. This is just asking them to continue to collect it and put it into the general transportation aid for counties. To best I could find out, that this amounts to about seventy-five million a year, which is substantial. So that's the point of the whole thing, that we can convince them to put it in that fund and keep it for that all the time.
Can you put your card?
Thank you. And thanks, Bill Clennan.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Rosa?
Can somebody just give me a big perspective on this? You know, how big is that PECFA fund? Does the state have any other plans that they might want this two cents for from a WCA perspective? Where do they stand on this, anything?
No stance right now. Does anybody else out there have an answer to that?
It's ending in two thousand and twenty-one. I mean, that's when it's in.
No, it's twenty.
Twenty.
Supervisor Wench, I'll call it off for you.
The best I could find out, as far as any payments coming out of that PECFA fund, anybody that has a claim has to file it by July one of two thousand and twenty. This kind of surprises me in that they said, when I talked to Wisconsin Patrol Council, they also told me that they've been paying out privately. To my knowledge, that had not been occurring, so. And it's really hard to get a number on how much money is in that fund currently. But there's some numbers landed on. The whole point here is that if we can get our foot in the door here, there's a possibility that, you know, we've taken due whatever suggestion, send it to these legislators, and hopefully we hit them all, the sponsor, and pass it on. It's just, you know, they'll venture up the game, I think. Hopefully, it works.
Any further discussion? All right, please vote. Resolution passed nineteen-zero. Second resolution from Judicial and Legislative Committee, page one-fifty-two and three.
This will be Resolution seventeen-nine-eleven, to authorize the entry into an agreement with law firms to pursue legal action against opioid manufacturers at no cost to Wood County. Fiscal note: nothing direct. Potential unknown monetary recovery and adjunctive relief leading to future savings in programs and services costs.
Motion by Clennan, second by Brad. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? Okay, please vote. And that resolution passed unanimously. The reason we get that in the packet is the WCA would like to have all these on the table by the time we have the conference next week. Where they want to be is out ahead of this, and the crux of this is not that there is an illegal opioid problem out there, but the fact that the manufacturers of some of these drugs have directly, apparently not been totally forthright with the physicians who are prescribing them, much like the smoking problem. In the smoking settlements, those went directly to the states, the counties would like to get out ahead of this and be at the forefront. There was one settlement in New York in the neighborhood, I think it was seventy-five million dollars to a single county, based on the expense that they have taken out through their human services departments, public safety, wealthy, the sheriff's department, jails, et cetera. So we want to make sure that there is a settlement there, that we are somewhat compensated for the expenses that we've had here in the county. Page one-fifty-four, the minutes of the Highway and Construction and Recreation Committee, beginning on one-fifty-four, running through one-fifty-eight. September seventh meeting, any questions there? Supervisor Zerfloo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just the old cop in me. I've been trying to track down what happened to the one-million-dollar resolution that we were going to bring up, and I still haven't gotten an answer. It wasn't in the packet. We voted on it in our last HURR meeting. So does anybody know why it didn't make the packet? I appreciate it. Thank you.
We had a very short discussion up here early, nobody, none of us know where, what happened, or, yeah.
I talked with Mr. Peckham briefly on my light tour here, and it will be coming to the executive committee next month.
Thank you. Can always count on the clerk.
So one-fifty-four to one-fifty-eight, the minutes from HURR, the Wood County State Wildlife Advisory Committee, minutes of seven-eleven on one-fifty-nine. The Parks, the Parks report, beginning with the Park Construction Supervisor Report on one-sixty, and running all the way through one-sixty-seven, and that includes the Forestry Report. Any questions there? And then that brings us to a resolution on page one-sixty-eight.
This will be Resolution seventeen-nine-twelve, to allow the Park and Forestry Department to retain all excess revenue in years where the actual revenue exceeds the budgeted revenue. Fiscal note: these excess revenues will be placed into the Parks and Forestry Capital Projects account. This account will continue to be used for funding capital improvement projects, as well as equipment purchasing and for covering operating expenses on years that revenues fall short of budget.
A motion by Zerfloo, and a second by LaFantine. Discussion? I'll go to Supervisor Brad first.
Before the meeting went, I had a brief discussion on the resolution, and he suggested we take it back to committee because there is no cap, and it doesn't say where the revenue would come from, so I would move to take it back to committee.
Someone wants to refer to committee, a second by Supervisor. Discussion?
I'd like also to have a note from the finance record as to what impact this has and what revenues we're actually talking about.
Supervisor Zerfloo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to know what meeting this decision was made at.
I was at the last Parks meeting. I believe I was there during that meeting. I have legal alert, it's on the table. Supervisor?
I sat down to, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, Duffin was set at a HURR meeting about this. We agreed to bring that resolution here, and the chairman just mentioned that he had a discussion last night, so I'm, what meeting that happened in, I guess is what I'm asking. Thank you.
Supervisor Brad?
There was no meeting last night, I just had a brief discussion this morning, as a suggestion from the chair.
Do you care if I comment here?
No.
I have no problem with the resolution, and the reason I mention this, committee chairman Brad, out of the hall, that this might probably garner a fair amount of debate, maybe we should go back to committee. I have no problem keeping, for instance, excess revenues, but I'd like to know what those are based on. Is there a base on budget amount we're going to work off of? Which particular revenues are we talking about? I'm in full favor of them building reserves to do these projects, I always have that. What I'm afraid I'd go is, in a year where they're short, are they going to compensate us? Do we have, if you had a wholesale change of the board, would you have somebody who budgets, who make it up a number of four-hundred thousand dollars of revenue when six-hundred is your normal number, and now we count that two-hundred plus, whatever comes in his access? I firmly support, I just would like to know what was based, I guess was my conversation in the hall. Supervisor Brad indicated to me, he wasn't sure exactly what it was based on either. Supervisor Zerfloo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand all that, they're all valid points. I do not oppose it going back to committee, but I just wanted to remind them, go on record again, that Parks and Forestry were cut severely last year by this board. And I just smell the same coyote running through the woods, so to speak, on this again. So I'm making my point. It just seems that the HURR committee basically is the last calf in the stall, so to speak, and I just got a feeling this is going to happen again, and it's not right. Thank you.
That's a fair comment. I just want to make sure that we know what numbers we're talking on. Like I said, I've supported that over the years, having those, for instance, timber revenues reserved, set aside, but I'd just like to know what basis we're working off, and make sure that there isn't a repayment that they failed to meet revenue numbers in a certain year due to whatever disaster might occur. We had a situation similar to the hurricanes they had down in South, whether it was torn act activity or something, and they were four-hundred thousand dollar shortfall, we're going to expect repayment. So as long as we clarify and go forward, I'm good with that one. So I do have a motion right now, just to refer to committee to clean that up. Further discussion on that, we had a motion and a second. Further discussion? All right, all in favor of referring to committee? Let's try it, so you signify by a high?
High.
opposed? Okay, that's going to go back to committee, and if you can clean up the language, great appreciate it.
Just don't want to repeat the last year, sir.
Second resolution from the HURR committee on one-sixty-nine and one-seventy.
This will be ordinance seventeen-nine-three, to establish an ordinance whereby ATV users may operate an all-terrain vehicle or utility terrain vehicle on the roadway or shoulder of any highway to cross a bridge that is one thousand feet in length or less. Fiscal note?
Again, for the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to approve? Supervisor Zerfloo, second by Supervisor Kramer. Discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Please vote. Supervisor Hamilton, you are next. Thank you.
Supervisor Hamilton's a little bit confused, though, because I just, I just, my name is. I just don't want to take away anything from the local people that are, that have been, this has gone through, I know it's gone through John Ford Edwards, it's coming through the Musa slowly, but it's coming on ATV trails, and I just wanted to make sure that this isn't restricting the local people at all, and it sounds like it's not. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
See, that resolution passed 18-1, 18-4. Central Wisconsin State Fair Board of Directors minutes from August 8 on 171. Supervisor Ashbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a very successful fair, and the way it sounds, so far it looks like we've had a positive end, that we might possibly make some money. There have been a few changes made, some would be kind of minor, but the main issue we're concerned about now is when the money comes in from the gates, it's not only with the fair, but with other activities that we seem to have the biggest problem, but it's already entering the morning up at the office, and these people are getting a little bit afraid without having some police protection there, or some do, because it does get kind of scary when you collect money from four or five gates, and you got to carry it upstairs at one time, so there will be some security to work out of that, so.
Supervisor Rosar.
So as one of the individuals that runs to the gates and collects all the money, I never felt that my life was threatened at any time. But we are going to make a huge change next year, where people are going to buy their tickets online, and so there won't be money exchanged at the gates, we'll just be scanning tickets. And that will alleviate some of this problem with, you know, people, we're convinced that people make $20 bills in their basement at the fair time, because we get a lot of them. And so that's going to be the biggest change next year, is the scannable tickets, so that it's not going to be as much a cash business next year.
Page 171 and 172. We have minutes of Supervisor Condon, McCallum Memorial Library Board of Trustees.
I'd just like to announce at 3 o'clock tomorrow, we're having an open house on our solar system net. We have one of the biggest in central Wisconsin, and we also have a meeting afterward at 4 o'clock, 4:30 depending upon how the open house goes. And I hope you would come in. The person that put it in, I can't think of his name, but he's a local resident, he now does things in Minnesota, that's where his office is out of. But he also flies drones and have permission to take drone pictures, so we'll be showing them tomorrow. It's kind of exciting to be part of that.
Thank you, thank you. It is about a solar panel, I saw the pictures the other day. All right, that's 173 and 174. South Central Library System Board of Trustees, July 27 on 175 and 176. The Directors Report for July on 177, 178, and 9. That brings me to the end of the packet. Again, we do have a number of supervisors attending the WCA Counties Conference down in Delle, in Kalahari, beginning Sunday afternoon, at least with the business meeting. Sessions all day Monday and Tuesday, as well as sessions for the clerk and some of the other people. Go ahead.
I just wanted you to make note of your reservation materials that I put on your desks. I left you my phone number, I've talked with Kalahari many, many times. Everything should be in place, but if you have any problems when you're down there, just text me or give me a call, and I'll help straight, and I'll do my best.
And then the last thing that we have is the dispatch center will be having an open house after next month's board meeting, so Lori would like to invite you all down next week, next week, next month after the county board meeting, to tour the new dispatch center if you have not had the opportunity to be there yet.
So I have.
Supervisor Rosar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last two pages of your minutes were the minutes of the university commission, and I want to tell you all that we had a ribbon cutting on Tuesday night. It was a very successful event. The building is complete, if you have a chance. The city invested a million dollars, the county invested a million dollars. Doug Mahan was chair during the majority of that construction period, and spent lots of hours and lots of time with the general contractor and our construction manager, so he is to be commended for the many hours that he spent with that project. And I just encourage you that if you have a chance to stop by, because of our investment in that, please go take a look at it. It's a beautiful building, and it's going to serve our students well and some pools and hospitals.
It is a beautiful building, it was, and it had a fantastic construction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I cannot pass up the opportunity to recommend to Chairman Rosar that she amend her minutes and actually include the name of Doug Mahan in the recognition sentence.
I saw that.
Because if, you know, for someone who picks up all our names, I think that might not come first.
And these minutes aren't approved yet, because we've not passed these at the commission.
All right, I'll change the address. Anything else to come before the measure? I need a motion to adjourn, Supervisor LaFontaine, and a second by Supervisor Hamilton. All in favor, signify by high.
High.
We stand in judgment.